Don said he'll be here in a few minutes. And to go ahead and have all my kids started.
Uh, so can I start?
Yes.
Okay, so like I was working on effecting the message API. So I defected it and Jerry, uh, so I today I did so many testing. Like you, you got so many messages from me, right? On the QA.
Uh, yeah, I was getting messages.
Yes, yeah. So Jerry, I tested everything and it's working, looking good to me. So like, uh, can you please review this PR again carefully? So it has like all these centralized like, uh, select to create message if you want to do any functionality changes, so you need to do only one process. So we don't need to go three places now.
Okay, sweet.
And like same for the last message, everything like simplified now, so you can check it and. I put this point request.
It's always weird. It's like, oh, we're dropping a bunch of lines from the code, but it is consolidated. So nice.
Yeah.
Okay.
I tested also my meanwhile, I will ask you to test it like in QA, then only we'll deploy on product.
Okay, yeah, uh. Alright, we're gonna. I proved that, then we're gonna merge it and. We'll test out a queue. Oh, uh, there's a conflict, but it might be something that, uh.
Uh, when I created public request that time, it was not conflict. Let me check it.
Yeah, I know. It might be something I did.
Okay.
Refactor, message refactor. Uh, I'll fix it.
Okay, Jerry. So Danny, that's it from my side. So mostly it's killing my time today. So I will start another thing tomorrow.
Okay, very cool.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause here first. John just got in here. Um, since yours, your update was really short, maybe you should just repeat it one more time really quickly. So don't get me.
So yeah, so John, like yesterday, I was working on effecting the message APIs. So today I have completed with the effecting the API and like yesterday I said, I will deploy several times on QA and test it. So I deployed so many times and tested it. And like it's looking good to me as like tested each and every functionality there. But Jerry, I asked Jerry to also review this code carefully since it is centralized. So we like it is. Uh, if it will be approved, naturally very good things to be there.
Okay. And how much testing did you say we did?
So I like I have inside messaging, I tested every aspect there.
Okay, great, um. What do you think?
But still I want, I want we we need to carefully testing on the QA first. Since it's a huge, uh, PR and like it will impact all functionality, my opinion.
Right, right. Um, what do you think, Jerry? So far with testing?
Uh, I haven't tested it, but we tested in QA. Uh, I'm just merging in my, um. My code that I did this morning with his code and then we'll push that in the QA and test it again.
I see. You said you have tested or haven't tested it?
I have not.
Okay, but you're going to?
Yeah, well, we're pushing it in the QA now, so we'll get feedback along the day as well.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Um, alright, uh, let's get your update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ooh, no momentum getting this merged. And alright, it's merging. So. Um, yesterday I should have gotten all the API endpoints that Amin needed. Uh, if, I don't know if it is a mean here, is there anything he's still waiting on? Um, but if some of the documentation on that, I can help explain any of the extra properties I added if he needs. Uh, that took a little bit of work, mostly because there was an interface that had to go along with it. So let me, uh, show that real quick. So we're gonna share. Okay. Uh, y'all can see my screen?
Yep.
So yeah, there's this new screen that I made, no, no pending request, but. You can, when you create a group and you request it be public, it's gonna go into this queue. And from this queue, uh, you can. If essentially you'll see like the group icon, the welcome message to user that created it. Um, and you could see something like this, you can see, um, just kind of the group image and the stuff that they had with it. Uh, and then there's also a preview button, which I have to change this. This is just, this is just linking the prod, but if I get a QA, I just made this little, oh, this is test group. I, I, I basically I linked the web view in it as an easy way. For us to preview a group without actually going in. Oh, that's something that. But.
Yeah, it's, it looks okay on mobile because it, um, has a margin on, right?
Okay.
So that's where I got the idea for, um, for Ismail to just increase the width. Of those, cuz they look better and I guess we haven't done that yet. Yeah, no one's gonna be looking at some on a desktop. Well, I guess they could.
Let me, let me see, is it like this? Okay. Um, okay, yeah, it's better now. But, um, yeah, this is the. The preview, I just did this as kind of a way that if you wanna peek in a group and see how the topics are set up. Um, in case you had any advice you went to communicate with them about. I just made that as an easy way to review the group when you're processing, when you're processing a request to make it public.
Okay, great.
So, yep, uh, what I'd like to do further off of this today is there are some database changes that I'd like to make. I'd like to make some, uh, dedic. They're all optimizations essentially as we look to scale out our public groups. Uh, so part of that, I would like to kind of create some top level fields. It's just some re-architecting. Of how some of the groups are made, like putting a top level field indicating whether the group is public or not. Um, essentially, I believe we're also, eventually, we're gonna need a query to search public groups. I would say once we get. A hundred public groups, you kind of all can't be at the top bar. We'll probably need a search function for it. So, um.
Well, we can, um. We can do some logic, like maybe we show. Certain ones to people of a certain age or certain geographic area or, you know what I mean? Like for, I, I think for a little while, we can. Get away with curating lists before we have to get in all that. Kind of like Facebook curates stuff you see.
Okay. Uh, I mean, if we have, um. Like, for the curation for, like, I don't know if it's the curation of it.
Like, for instance, if we knew, you know, everybody in the paranormal chat is over forty. Maybe we only show paranormal chat to people over forty, let's just say.
Yeah, and I guess on, uh, my, my question is, is so when we scale that out to a bunch of users, we're gonna handle like tagging. For every public group, uh, usually they would let the, us- usually the user or like the admin of the group would handle the tagging.
What do you mean by tagging?
So tagging would be kind of as you're saying for curation for, um. Prioritizing that group amongst others based on the requesting user activity.
How would that be up to the user?
Uh, in other platforms, it's been that like YouTube, I, I guess it's not. I, I'm just thinking of, if we're gonna start manually curating stuff like that. Unless there is an automated way you can imagine curating it. Um, I'm just imagining, how do we do this when we're dealing with like five hundred, a thousand public groups?
I don't know, I'll think about it.
Yeah, cuz if I just start building that kind of stuff out, that. That's a lot more complicated than just doing a, a text search almost.
Yeah.
Cuz I feel like we would want a better, a better way to see all the groups that are public.
Right, right. Almost like a gallery too could be an option. Uh, well, let's, this is really experimental right now. Let's not worry about it too much just yet. Just kind of get the. Foundation laid.
Yeah, that's not my top priority. My top priority would be those, uh, those new database fields, specifically right now. We have, um, when we're calculating who is the creator of a group. What we're doing is, um. When we're doing to create a group, what we're doing is we're pulling in all the messages and we're pulling the first message created and we're seeing who created it. Uh, that is a lot more expensive than if you just had, because it's a static field that never changes. If you just had a static field in the database, that would be a lot more efficient to look up, especially that we're gonna start. Pulling queries and badges on user profiles whenever they create certain groups. So, um, that's one of the re-architecting projects that I wanna do for this.
Okay. How, how much effort is that? And, and tell me again, where is that the performance gonna gain?
I mean, that's gonna be, for example, when you're viewing a user profile, we're beginning a lot, we're putting a lot more emphasis on. Uh, creators and showing which groups that they created.
But you won't see the groups unless you click through to their profile, so. It's not every time I go to a pro, it should definitely access.
Well, still, uh, if you go to a user's profile, we are calling that query every time the user's profile is viewed.
Maybe we shouldn't do the one where it like brings back all the groups. Does that save us any load?
We still have to, we still have to find if there's one.
True.
And this would actually, cuz what I'm doing is I'm looking up who created the first message. So for example, we create, like the Garibaldi Arts Club group.
Yeah.
If we're trying to call David the creator of Garibaldi Arts Club group.
Yeah.
Then I don't think David is the first person to put a message in that group.
Yeah.
So. To be able to kind of see that top level field and if we stage a group like this, we can assign. A quote unquote creator to it a lot easier without requiring that person to have the first message in that group's chronology.
Okay. Yeah, that's important.
Yeah, so it, it's all, it all comes part, part of that in the end too, because we're putting an emphasis on the creator. That's kind of why we were almost like, I guess we may have been confused when we were looking at like the creators when Amin was reviewing the query yesterday. So it was like, oh, who created this group? And it's hard to tell, so, um.
Okay.
It's just better enabling that kind of stuff.
Okay. Are we gonna be looking at a slowdown, uh, every time I go to a user profile?
I'm not gonna say it's gonna be a measurable slowdown, but I'm gonna say it's not ideal. It, it's one of those things that it's. I haven't noticed the queries taking long.
Can it load? Okay, so that little creator badge, can it just load that in last?
Hmm, well, that would have to be a separate query.
Should it be?
Um, no.
It should be based on what you were saying, no?
No, cuz and then as well as you also would have to do a separate query and you'd have to make the Apollo client. Query it separately. Um, th- there's a lot of extra logic you'd have to, cuz right now I just put it inside of the get user query.
Well, okay, okay.
And.
Let's, let's talk it through a little bit more. So what, okay, if, if, uh, if we have creators and non-creators. I mean, that seems like a very binary. Label. Can't we, can we designate them in the database like upfront? Like, you know?
That's kind of what I'm gonna be doing. That's kind of what I'm proposing.
I see.
Is that we're gonna have an upfront field for this?
Okay.
Yeah, cuz right now it's all kind of calculated on demand.
Yeah, on demand seems like a bad idea.
It's, no, yeah, it's not, it's not a good idea. It's something that I plan on doing. It just, the logic works, like the logic matches. But because we're scaling this out, we need it to be more binary, like you're saying.
Okay, yeah, so right now it gets it done, but it's not optimal.
It's not optimal.
Okay, so this way it'll, everyone will be designated. Or upfront, right?
Yes.
So then. There doesn't have to be any, any calculations when I go to a profile, like it'll come with it, like kind of like their image comes with it. Well, I guess even that is grabbed on demand, isn't it? The image each time, profile image?
Yeah, it, it all comes with their query, but yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be a much, it's gonna be a much more streamlined thing. It's gonna be a lot less calculated.
Are there a couple more things you could put in that while you're at it, like the profile image, like?
It, uh, the profile image already comes with it. So like the you, we, we give you the URL with the profile image. And then the front end takes that URL and request it.
Okay.
We can't, we can't give you the image. If we started providing the image, that would be a huge slowdown if we did, if we did that.
Okay, what about the blue check mark?
That comes, that's in part of that same query.
It's ca- calculated on demand?
Uh, you know, it's calculated with the user query. So whenever you fetch a user, like when you're fetching. Name, their followers, all, all that and the check mark comes from that query.
Okay, so what, is that another good example though, where you could? Have it calculated upfront in the database?
The check mark?
Yeah, assigned.
It already is.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's not, it's not like when I go to a user profile, I'm waiting for that to be term, to be determined?
Correct. Yeah, everything is, the, everything is even like, even like the followers and friends. We have a statistics table that updates in the background. So that, that isn't even calculated most of the time either. It's just right now, this new creator field, uh, because of how we're, we're querying it, we didn't envision this, this query. Or, so now we're just kind of tagging in the fields that we need and like. Reducing the amount of calculations.
Okay, well. You're, so you're gonna make this your high priority? Tell, tell me what else you got done, cuz I don't, I, I would say it's a medium priority because we don't have the feature yet. Um, and I'm really excited about some of the other stuff we got going on with, uh. Some of the web views stuff and whatnot, um.
I, I need to loop back with Aad today on how the, uh, the chat admin is as far as like removing messages in a, uh. In a private chat.
Okay.
So I, I need to loop back with him on that. Uh, other things, let's see.
Also medium priority.
So what are you considering high priority right now?
I got the, uh, I got the AdWords behaving.
Okay, well, we got, I got the AdWords tag in.
And I saw that. I think that might have helped. Uh, I couldn't, I wasn't getting very many impressions. And, um, but also could have just needed to get seasoned, but now it's getting a lot of impressions and a lot of clicks.
Mm-hmm.
We're talking like a penny a click.
Yeah.
So. Right. Um, now we just need to convert. So. That's what I wanna really look into is, uh, maximizing those conversions. There's a lot of, a lot of things that can be done there, but.
Look, including maybe from the AdWords side, could you do retargeting campaigns from AdWords?
Yep, so a lot, a lot can be done.
Yeah.
So, um. Well, let's, let's see, and what else? You guys had some other priorities too, what else?
I know the other thing I had was like with the, um, the chat notification, the, not chat notification, the location notification.
Oh, right, right. That one I would put up there because it's, or it's like ninety-five percent to the finish line.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I was able to do that yesterday as well.
Fantastic. And so you have that in production or?
Yeah, it's in product. Let me, let me double check, but I believe I put it in prod yesterday. Uh, now. I don't wanna distract too much, but I think that. At least on Todd's phone, there's an issue of clicking notifications that. Is not just related to these notifications, but he alerted us last night. From one of the no- notifications that he received. He was like, hey, I'm at this ballpark. I got this notification. I am at the ballpark, but I tapped the notification and it sent me to my chat lobby. Which means that the app did a hard reset when he clicked that notification.
Right, um. Could you push that same notification to him again and see if it takes him to the profile?
Uh, yeah, I, I can do it with him. I did it with myself and, um. Yeah, it wouldn't, it brought me straight to the profile for the ballpark. And but Todd was also, he put some more examples in development earlier. Uh, from this morning and last night, like there's different, like some chat notifications are just bringing them in his lobby. There's something that when he's, there's something that's happening under the hood that when he clicks a notification. His app is like restarting, like there, you can literally like see a flash.
Was he seeing that screen that says support local businesses?
Yeah, well, like you see a, you see like a flash before it or after it.
Right, my phone does that too occasionally, um, kind of out of the blue.
But the, does a notification bring you to your chat lobby?
I don't know that I've. Seen that happen, but I can open the app from the background and it'll restart sometimes.
Yeah.
After enough use, you know?
What, what, what I'm seeing with Todd here though is that. Like the notification is, is not, notification's getting dropped. The notification that he's tapping.
Uh-huh.
So it's bringing him to his chat lobby as if it was just a, a, a clean app open.
Yeah, isn't that because? It's trying to open the app, the app maybe has maybe a map, too much memory and it's just restarting, so it would have navigated. Like it, it's not doing, uh, uh, in other words, it's not doing it every time. Like I bet if he had the app forced closed.
Mm-hmm.
And it opened it right up, perhaps it would have kept. Its place.
I mean, to your understanding, is that Android specific? Because I mean iOS, I can navigate on a, uh, on a hard close.
Like, I, I can do some more, I can do some more testing. It happens fairly often. I would say probably half the time. I'm clicking notifications, it's happening.
Let me get Amin in on this.
Yeah.
I mean. We've talked about this on and off for months about the, uh, the app. Kind of restarting and going to the splash screen versus in support local businesses. It sounds like in Todd's case, he's on Android. It's happening around half time, taps a notification. Which my theory is that it, it, it would have navigated him. To the right chat, but because his phone had too much memory or something like that. It restarted the app and then just put him in the message lobby because like forgot, like they lost. That notification info. What do you think?
Yeah, like if we seen this splash screen. In like the app kind that restarted for, for whatever reason, most of the time, the memory. Um, but like the, um, not taking the user after that. To, um, not following the deep link or the notification deep link. Um, I think that's like, uh, it is location I need to look into to see. Maybe we're missing something in our configuration deep links. So in case, even like if the app restarted. All this notification is gonna cause the app to, um. Do not like be like sus- from the suspended state to an active state. Maybe we need something more in the deep link configuration, so it works in these cases too, at least. Um, yeah, but like if Todd can, um, um, I produce it a lot of times, then, uh. Will be easier to, to work on since will be, we'll, we'll be having more insights to know where to, to look. With this issue.
Okay.
Yeah, let me, let me know how I can help. I can keep providing screen record or screen shares. Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll go back to the, uh, session replays of few, of few sessions and, and see if there's anything there to. Do that.
Okay, yeah, take a, yeah, that's right. He's on Android, so you can actually see it, so that's helpful. And so when it does work, Todd, it does take you right into the conversation?
It sure does, yeah, it does work sometimes.
Yeah, so I don't think there's a problem with the notification. I think it's a problem with the app.
Yeah.
Restarting.
Yeah. I'll do some more testing too when it comes to, when it's happening frequently, I'll do a force close and. Clear cache and reopen and see if things are more consistent.
Okay.
I'll see what I can find out.
Is this a new thing or it's always been about half the time?
No, it feels like this is something very recent.
Okay, that's important to know. And it's the same phone you've always been using?
Yeah, yeah, same phone.
Okay, so then maybe we introduce something, I mean?
Introduce something like. Causing the app to be restarted?
Right. I mean, we are, what build is this, Todd? Seventy-five?
Seven, I think the one that's on the store, I think it's seventy-three. Let me double check. I mean, like we, I don't think like we did something to, uh, for it specifically. Maybe something else is contributing to this, uh, you would not think of it and it's.
That's kind of what I mean. I mean, something added that had, you know, we thought was an enhancement for chat or something.
Uh.
Anywhere.
Yeah, I don't know, out of my head, I have to go through all the changes and like scan them. See maybe something is clean, if like an issue, but.
Let me ask Chantel, are you having an issue, Chantel, where if you tap on a notification for a message, it restarts the app and puts you in the message lobby?
Um. That does sound familiar of clicking on. A notification and going to the message lobby.
A lot?
No.
Okay.
It's not repeatable.
Right, right.
It's not like every time I click on one. And also I was just generally having issues with my notifications on my now old phone. So now that I'm on a new phone, maybe that'll kind of give more proper results.
Okay, oh, yeah. You, you mean you were having problems because of the test environment situation?
Well, that definitely, yeah, when I'm in the test environment, it's just very unreliable because I get notifications for prod.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, well, let me know if you also see that.
Okay.
And Todd, what version did you say you're on?
That's seventy-three.
Okay, seventy-three. And you noticed it mostly starting in seventy-three?
I, I think so. I think so. It's, it feels very recent.
Okay.
I'll see if I have some older screen records. From, um, previous versions.
Okay, let me know what you see, I mean, and Jerry, um, you were also, you were still updated, I think, unless you're done.
Real quick, John, if you don't mind, um, before Jerry moves on there, um, about the, um. Managing messages in private chats and you mentioned put a medium priority on that, I. We're gonna have ambassadors and, uh, we have managers in the group chats are, are ready. And I don't know how soon they will need to or want to be able to manage the messaging in there.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have some time, we have a week, you know?
Okay.
I just think I want done immediately.
Yeah, yeah, no problem, no problem. Just wanted to make you aware.
I know, I'm, I'm keeping that in mind.
Okay, cool, no worries.
Thanks. Okay, so yeah, Jerry, go ahead.
Okay, I know where, when we kind of left off, it was like kind of, we were touching base on, okay, what is highest priority? Cuz there were a bunch of mutations that were kind of blocked on Amin's and I got them all.
Those are the highest, yeah, and then any, anything with the links working or not working, you know, that's all the highest priority right now.
Yeah, um. The only other thing I could say is, okay, so the links for the web views. Those are front end, those are getting resolved. I think they're already resolved locally. Um, now. I should probably build in tracking on it. Um, just, just so we can start viewing views on that. Would, would you consider that in the same priority for it?
Tracking is a high priority.
Okay, then, uh, tracking will be number one. It'll be a combination of adding tracking on those group links. And also, like I said, adding those top level fields to skip the calculations.
Okay, cool. Yeah, being able to see, so tracking is great, but being able to see it. In a visual way that, that can be digested.
Yeah, so that's another thing was those reports on the, uh. On that dad, on this dashboard right here, let me just show you. I didn't get to making these changes, but the, um. Oh, yeah, this is, um. This is QA, that's why. But, um. Yeah, these invites, this is QA, that's why it's zeroed, but adding the relevant columns here. And, um, maybe saying something that we can do with the, uh, the web views as well.
What's it, what was that?
Uh, adding the relevant columns here that you also wanna see, uh. The clicks. The clicks.
Um. Yeah, we could add any columns we want, right?
Yeah, um. Like what what kind of columns?
Um, how about like names of users or phone numbers or?
Okay, so you can kinda, you wanna be able to click a day and view like a detailed report for that day?
Not not necessarily, I'd rather it be. One screen, so like.
Hmm. We want, we have the simple view, and we also have, so we also wanna create a a more complex view version of this.
Let's do this, let's uh, I wanna dive into this. Yeah, let's um, let me get the rest updates and I'll, let's let's come back to this, cuz. This is key, if this, if I can see this in a way that helps and gives me all the whole picture. I can move quick, cuz there's a lot we could. Expose, um. Like if we know, if we if we're tracking every link, then we can tell where um, they're most effective. And um. And se- but separate from different campaigns. Like if we have two for the UFC chat, for instance, um. I would like to see um, the results for each one. And have it show, you know, how many clicks it's getting, have the web view, it would be great to be be great to see how long they were on the web view. I mean, I, you know, like, we could go so far, I don't know how much we can get, but. I'll 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 tell you like my wishlist and then we'll see what's realistic.
Yeah, some some of that almost sounds like uh, Google Analytics, I'm not a Google analytics expert, but I've. Worked with it enough to know that you can get like view times and stuff out of it.
Yeah, 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 well, let's look at that together too, cuz I was hitting some things that I, it was out of my league, it sets up track uh, tracking templates. It was code that had to be used and I was I was looking, I didn't know how to read it. Um, so yeah, let's let's do that after this.
Another thing that you you asked me to do is to, for the public groups, have them indexable on Google.
Yes, um, let's start with the main ones like UFC.
I it, we automate it.
Um. Okay, well, okay, yeah, I guess that's fine, I'll see what on.
Yep.
Cool, okay, great, I'm 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 excited to jump into this stuff, um, so let me uh, let me run through the rest of these updates and we'll we'll come back to it.
Okay.
Okay, cool, thank you, um, I mean, let's get your update, did you, were you able to um, see anything on that session replay?
Um, so I was like still searching, trying to find a session replay that has anything, but no, so so looking to.
But let me ask Todd then, when, last time Todd, you tapped the notification that restarted the app, was that today?
Um, yeah, today, uh, probably happened just uh, we were just first talking about it.
Okay, so on standup?
Yeah, on standup, so probably in the last, I I I've been doing it right now for like the last five minutes and it's functioning perfectly.
Right, well, cuz I think your phone has to build up memory.
Um, what, I never reset anything, I I never reset it or forced closed it or anything.
But it just reset it when the last time it did it, it reset it.
Oh.
So I mean, so you started fresh and you're building it up, the more you use it, more you use it.
Yeah, yeah.
Eventually it will, that's my theory, um, so I mean, it's gonna be just like ten fifteen minutes ago.
Yeah.
Do you need his uh, user key, I mean?
Yeah, yeah, uh, I got his phone number, so. I'm gonna get that, um, so from, yeah, like there's only like five session replays for the past hour. And in the past fifteen minutes, it's like, um, yeah, it's looking, let's see, fifteen minutes. There's two, so yeah, I'll I'll look into this too and see what's going on there, that's useful. Well, from this like, let me do one, yeah, so I have these two session replays from the last uh, fifteen minutes. Both of them, they started as like block screen, then a chat. So I guess in this case it was working, cuz it says it's like, it was the lobby.
Sorry, I'm messaging our animator, but I'm, he's. Some, he's gonna be with me in real time on something, I don't wanna lose that, but um, uh, what was it, what were you saying, I mean?
I'm inspecting this uh, session replays.
Hmm.
Like now, like I check two, both of them, like when the session replay starts, it's like a black screen, so I was assuming it's like the app starting.
Right.
Then is the chat, not the lobby.
That's the way that's what Todd's saying. That's probably what happened right there. Is, right, so that that notification he clicked should have taken him to the message itself.
Yeah, and that's that's what's in this session replay.
You said it's taken her to the message lobby?
No, no, I said like, if if it was broken, it would be the message lobby.
Okay, so this, what's, where is it taking him?
Okay, let me, let me share um, screen.
Okay, is is it taking him to the message lobby or to the conversation?
To the conversation, so for example, this one.
Right, yeah, that's probably not the right one.
Yeah, so it's black and the conversation.
Yeah, so that's, this is not what you're describing, right, Todd?
Correct, this is not what I'm describing.
Right, so find another one, I mean.
Yeah, okay, um, trying to get through it again. There's this one too, I mean, these are for the past fifteen minutes, this one just started like that and. The app. Yeah.
Is there an earlier session replay?
Yeah, go back like twenty, thirty minutes.
Okay, um.
Twenty.
No, um, like, there's only.
Uh, do a twenty-four hour, let's not restrict it, it's hard, sometimes hard to estimate, so. Okay, so you'd started at the top already, have you already looked at the first three?
Like, damn, yeah, well, let me just.
Go to the fourth one then? That's only, that's only three minutes ago, this this wouldn't be it.
Yes, well, so so.
Yeah, he said it was working perfectly, so, yeah, go back there, it's one of these. This is two hours ago, this is a little too long.
It's long, but it's, it's all gray, meaning.
Well, he probably just had the app open but not doing anything or background it.
Possibly, yeah.
But this is two hours ago, I mean, so go up. Oh, oh, try try from the fourth one down, or I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, that's what I did, like this, that's that's what I did, I mean, it caused all of this, like before opening all of this. So it was like this uh, first, second, third, fourth, and you want me to go from here?
Yes.
This is like two hours ago and like.
No, this is only one, wait.
This is a second hour ago, um. Is it? But like nothing happens, like, I don't know, maybe session replays log in, I don't know. Um, I do play, nothing happens.
I think the app is backgrounded, right?
No, like you see like there's this, um.
Oh, yes, it's not picking up.
It seems seems like an issue with the session replay or. There's some, like the events are here. I look, nothing in the video. So yeah, this one's not helpful, I mean. Um. Check this one. It is the same one.
Why does this look exactly the same? Right.
Let me see if the events are the same. Um, yeah, they're like kinda difficult, I don't know what's wrong with sentry. It's like even the events and. Hmm.
Maybe I can give you the exact time it happened last night. When I was reporting it in Slack. In real time.
Okay. This one. Yeah, the session replays are kinda corrupted, they're not, we're in, there isn't stuff here. Oh wait, let me check. Is it just, maybe just me, um, let me see, Jerry, would you, would you open this one for you? Yeah, can you like this session replay that I was just sending you, can you like open it, does it work? Maybe just my browser, uh, maybe?
It starts all black, but there's nothing, there's no events for like fifty-seven minutes.
Yes, same for me, so there's something wrong with what's session replay, sentry. Let me see this one.
Just start from the second breadcrumb.
It's from just, oh, we're looking for. Let's see this one. Maybe this is one of, um, this is like four hours ago. Um, Todd, do you remember like? If, I don't know, but like.
I if I if I gave you, I can tell you, I made a recording, a screen record at nine sixteen PM Pacific time. Last night, and I'd be curious if you picked it up.
You should, and we can, um, said. I have to convert that to my time, um.
Yeah, let's.
Um, so last night, so it's gonna be. Just. Wait. Last night was my my day, my morning, so it's gonna be. You said like nine, um.
Nine sixteen PM Pacific Standard Time.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and send.
Would that be like five AM, five fifteen or six fifteen for you?
Yeah, they're like that, that's what I'm trying to look up, um. Hmm.
You're eight hours ahead.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's gonna be like four AM or five AM, so they're like telling me, so, so it's gonna be uh. Four and five. I had to, I'll get this here. Let me see. Oh, this, yeah. But now like with sentry that it's logging, we might be having it, but like nothing is there. It's like, this is not like helpful, I thought like, not giving such replies, but like even decision with plays are broken.
I'd like to see if they're broken for all Androids or if this is a fluke, like what is going on here?
Um.
Let's see, um. Another Android.
Okay, let me do another like.
Those are outside of the country, that one's, that's fine, yeah, play that one, that one doesn't look broken. Why are Todd's broken, is it build seventy-three?
Yeah, it is, build seventy-three.
Yeah.
Um. All right, this is uh, this is Android chat, okay, so let's look down. Oh, this box looks fine. This looks fine. Let me check again, yeah, all of them seven two three.
One thing I am noticing is that they're all starting at the splash screen.
That's, that's an interesting observation. Well, wait.
But, that's one of, weird, now go. Go to like the next event, go to the app and foreground, click it in the breadcrumb.
Yeah, then it's.
So are.
But this is not Todd, it's it's having the same issue. Um.
By the way, leave it there for a second, that that's what I was pointing to to uh. Uh, Ismail. There's something weird going on with the headers, I think, is this, is this similar to the emoji issue? See the header up there, how it's like dot dot dot?
I'm. I have, I I posted a bunch of screenshots on, last night in Slack. Of the different groups that I have found like this, and it's, it turns out that it. Um, it looks like it's only group names that have lowercase letters. This happens too. Every single one with uppercase, they, this doesn't happen.
Are you Todd, the one who had a? So another Android. Who uh, was on a different. Was over the, you you got two Androids, one that had a problem with the chat, with the two emojis, one that didn't, right?
Correct, the Pixel didn't have a problem with the emojis and the Samsung phones do.
Okay, can you see if the Pixel displays the title normally or not, real quick?
Great idea, let me test it right now.
This is interesting too, look how it says start typing, I mean, down in the input field, so like, this is build seventy-three, right?
Yeah.
And so, remember, start typing was missing? Um. So we did something that made it disappear, build seventy-four, I think.
Yeah.
I can't remember, did you figure that out yesterday, why?
I'm in seventy-three and it's happening to me.
It doesn't say start typing?
No.
Well, that's even stranger, cuz this is seventy-three, right, I mean?
Um, okay, tags, yeah, seventy-three.
I wonder why it's there for this user and not for Todd?
And it was not there for for Wales too yesterday, ah, I remember like he said he's gonna be looking into it, cuz he was working on that screen. I'm not sure if he's gonna be looking into it or not, but.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get to him in a minute, is this text, um, do you think they have the accessibility? Thing on, is their text larger or is this just a really small phone?
Let me see what phone is this. Oh, you should be like, um.
Android fifteen.
Yeah, it's it's, it's the model, but like, there's no, um. Um, I don't know, there you go. So it's. It's like, this twenty-five, this is this twenty-five, so.
So that should be a larger phone, right?
Right, yeah.
It's the Ultra, that's supposed to be.
Yeah.
Very big.
Why does it look so cramped?
Um, it's true. What is it, I'm trying to find it.
Did they have, did accessibility settings on, is that why? It made the text extra big?
Maybe.
Everything looks extra big, if, this is a really big phone and it only shows three topics at the top, I don't get it, what's going on here? So like, I'm on a Pro Max, okay, so if I go to my conversation, I have, counting the main chat, I have one, two, three, four, five. And almost six available on the top.
Yeah.
Maybe he has the. Maybe he has the screen zoomed in.
That has to be, right? Screens.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Because yeah, I'm on a much smaller phone and it shows five.
Okay.
There's something, there's something wrong with session replay and century. Like, there's no trace. Normally, there will be traces here. Errors like, like. There's an issue with century, like, there, there, it's the dashboard century.
I wonder how much errors ha- are having problem with Todd tapping notifications and restarting the app for him too. Maybe it's, maybe it's century.
Um, I don't know, but like I was like saying, problems centuries, like. Whatever they do in the backend to handle what we send them, because. Because it, it, everything is missing. The video, the trace. Errors like there's no errors and, yeah, I don't know what's going on here.
Um, let's look at some more, because Jerry observed that they were all starting at the splash screen. Let's look, look at a few more. That's splash screen. Okay, that's weird, right? Unless it's a new install. That's not a new install, because it says chat stack.
No, I don't think it's weird to start at splash screen.
Well.
Like, because the recording session replay starts as soon as the app starts, so.
Well, I am, most people don't close apps, they have them in the background. And I never see the splash screen unless my app restarts. Why is that emoji half of an emoji? On the bottom? Is that an image? What is that? Right there, yeah? What is that?
Looks like a broken heart to me.
Yeah. Is that even real? It looks like it's the half of a heart.
Hmm.
Okay, wait, I can go to that chat. One sec. Um, this is today?
Um.
Yeah, I see that, I see that heart.
Yeah, it's thirty two minutes ago, something like that.
Yeah, I see it fine on my iPhone. Chantel, can you go to Maggot Army chat? It's only like the fifth message up.
Yes. If I'm logged into, um, production.
Okay, what did you say, Todd?
It looks fine for me.
What is going on? Maybe it's session, is it session replay? Is that all it is? But it's weird that it scrolled, right? I mean, like, it's not like. It's a fr- bad frame, like they moved the whole screen and it stayed happening. See?
Yeah.
So that's, I, it leads me to believe that's what it looks like. But maybe not, I don't know. We could ask this. So why did it access the splash screen right there?
Yeah, this is weird. Um, this one is weird. Let me see. See the breadcrumbs at the end? Okay, and, yeah, it's weird, this splash screen here, like, what's the last thing he tapped on? There's a fetch going on. If it's in the API, the last thing.
Let's stick with this, Jerry. I want to get to the bottom of this. This is. I know this is a prob- this is a problem in many ways, not just Todd's issue. I think it causes, I think there's, we have some inherent. Problems here that we have never really addressed. Maybe it's, maybe it's mostly front end, I don't know, but like, let's, let's at least look at logs and whatnot here, spend a little time on this for a minute.
What, what do you, what do you, what is the problem that we're seeing?
Apps restarting.
App restarting. See, does anybody on iOS have this problem?
I do occasionally have, you know.
So, yeah, yeah, that's kind of how I, I'm feeling it on iOS. It's like, yeah, sometimes it might reset, um, but. I feel like for Todd's case, it's happening way too often.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that, that's like a memory saver function on his phone, like, one thing, Todd, do you have like, um? Do you have like one of those memory optimizing apps on your phone? Like one of those third party apps?
No, not at all.
Okay.
So, I mean, since we've been, since we've been talking about this. I, I keep testing every, every notification I get, I test it, and it's working just fine.
Oh, cool, it's scary, but.
So. I'll, I'll keep you guys updated.
There's still something. It just happened in a lot of, in a very short time.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
When the app is put in the background where it's not, not actually closed. Is there any cache being cleared at all? When it gets put in the background and brought back out?
When the app in the background? No, we don't. But if you close the app and open it, yeah, it's, um, all the.
Okay, thank you.
This happens with any other. Yeah, it is, it is broken here too, like the, the hot.
Right.
This Android, um.
So.
User? Yeah, it's the same user, but different chat.
Oh, okay.
So maybe it's something leads to this, this device.
What device?
Is, um, is this one, is it Android, which one? Wait, Android ten? Yeah. Oh. Galaxy Note nine. So, that's, I guess the, the notes phones are figured too. Um.
So, one thing that I know about to try and see if it's device specific. Um, usually this is like, I think more front end work, but there's browser stack. You could probably try and upload an APK on the browser stack and see if you can reproduce it. Since they have physical devices, that's the only way I could think of to try and see if this is device spec- specific.
Mm-hmm. Um, yeah, I mean. Yeah, like for testing and more, yeah, we can, we can leverage that, or. There's also like five days, they have like a device farm to Amazon. W S, like they, they do have like, um, and we can automate, automate it, the whole thing, once you, we go deeper.
Yeah, automated. I know browser stack, you can do a manual test on. Because it might, it might take a while to, you know, get an automated test running.
Yeah, um. You know, like, right now, we cannot install a PK. Like, we, you, you cannot allow.
Be a bundle? I wonder if you can upload a bundle to browser stack?
Uh, I don't realize, uh, is doing, let's see.
Yeah, let's browser stack. Well, that said, you can test the published app. I just was reading something about. Yeah. Okay, and that's a, you get thirty minute session, that should be enough to probably s- see if you can start it up.
Yeah, um. So, I'm like.
Yeah, I believe App Live. And then Samsung. Note nine.
Don't see it.
Um. Okay.
It's mostly galaxies and, yeah.
I have S nine, Note twenty.
That's twenty. Um. I don't, I don't see that it's twenty. Yeah, that's just got, the galaxy is twenty, this one?
I think it's a note, I thought it was a note nine.
Yeah, it is like, um, oh, so that's good. It was, yeah, this one is, uh.
Oh, that's twenty five.
No, uh, um. Like, what is it? Uh. Example, this one. Yeah, this one is, it's not, it's, um. Yeah, it's, it's not nine. It's not here. Let's see if, if that issues in other devices too.
Uh, you could filter by device.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, probably that.
Like browser stack or, or here?
Uh, century.
Oh, yeah.
You can run, run a device tag.
Oh, oh, I'm already opening the, these session plays, I'm just gonna be. On them, see, if they're working. Um, so let's say here. Okay, let me do. Yeah. What it's called? Family. It's the same user. It's only user that has this, um.
Well, well, that's a very short time range. Expand the, uh.
Oh, yeah, let me do, uh.
Last thirty days. Yep, uh, um, I would go beyond little seventy three.
Um, user.
That could probably be why browser stack doesn't support it.
Yeah, it's.
If I, if I recall that nobody got a Note nine, because the Note eight was the one that would just spontaneously catch on fire.
Yeah, it was going on. And also like he's, he's on Android ten. Android ten is, um, I don't know, it's a little bit, it's, um, it's, it's on older version.
Yeah. It was very possible the Note nine isn't well supported enough to really make a big deal out of it.
Yeah, uh, but yeah, well, there's not the issue we're like looking into.
Right, where, where there's the other issue with the app restart, I was just talking about the emoji.
Yeah, um, this one is interesting, this one.
What are we doing right now? Will we cancel? I think it's two things, like why are these Android session replays so long? And why are some users, Todd, for example, uh, his app is restarting a lot when he's clicking push notifications?
Why is the app restarting at all for really, you know, um? Slack almost never restarts for me.
No, one thing is if it involves memory usage, then we do know that we are like traditionally higher memory use because of the React native. But I, I would also say the session replay also has another kind of memory footprint onto it.
Yeah.
But I, I still. I don't know. I'm tempted to know if we just turn off session replay, what happens?
Yeah, I'm, I'm suspecting it's replay too, because like. Most of the issues we ha- we were having with the app, the app performance, it was like, because of such replays.
And didn't on seventy two or seventy three, didn't we update the session replay? When did we update it to use the, uh, their experimental fast rendering?
That was only for iOS. All that they did, they were.
Okay, so that, that didn't update the SDK for Android either though, right?
No.
Okay.
I mean, we did upgrade the SDK to have that new experimental, but that new experimental was only affecting iOS, but. With the update, update we did, might be there was something else that we did for Android. Uh, not aware of, but yeah.
Some changes in there, you know? I hate chasing ghosts around, um. So you're not having the problem anymore now, Todd?
I think he said since we started, uh, stand up, it hasn't happened, or since, since we started looking into it.
Because he said it's happening half the time. And then, well, I don't get it. We couldn't find a single session replay to show it?
What do you mean to show it?
Like we never.
I started interrupt, but I don't think this is really necessarily catch these kind of problems, so after he starts, this is really playing off.
It would still show the splash screen.
Uh, well, the thing is like, okay, so let's say he clicked on a notification. Now, at that point, the app is not responding, so the replay is not working. So it would be, this sort of splash screen would be after what already happened had happened, after the app has already disconnected. Uh, that's my theory with this, so I don't know how much of help session replay would be with Todd's problem specifically.
What other century logs could we look at?
Well, are we trying to find Todd's session replay that what that when it reset?
That's what started this.
So. Yeah, I found one of them from yesterday. If that's what we're trying to find.
Can we share that?
Yeah. Give me a sec. Cuz I traced it from Todd's um. Let's see, explore replays. It was from last night when he tapped the notification at. What time was this at? Forty three. At fifteen hours ago.
Can you share a link with your um with Amin?
I'm getting it pulled in. It's nine ten P M Pacific Daytime. This is fifty one. It was at eight fifty one my time. Okay, why do I not see it now? Let's see. I had it with the with the splash screen and all. Let's see.
What we were looking for.
Yeah, let me see. I try finding cuz I I literally saw the splash screen. I was like, well, your screen flash. Or no, that was from his recording in um. Okay, I'm trying to tie the dots together. Yeah, okay, at nine nineteen P M my time. So seven nineteen, Todd sent the screen recording and that's where he saw the flash. And that was at four forty three his time, so six forty three my time.
Okay, does it show anything on the replay?
I'm I'm going to it. He sent it later, so I gotta go to six forty three. This is too. Much, six forty three.
Also, here's kind of, I guess, maybe of why this would happen. Um, so if you click on a notification and the deep link gets passed and the app restarts, then the deep link would get lost. Cuz the app restarted.
Okay, alright. I sent it to me.
Did you got the screen session replay or the screen record?
Uh, this is the session replay that corresponds with Todd's screen recording at four forty three. You could see where the replay starts with the notification opened activity.
Yeah, there is it.
And then it just goes to chat lobby.
Yeah. And also like this is good within. I'm not sure if we can search with this one. Notification of an activity so we can find all of those kind of such replays. Okay, so this.
Wait, so if that notification session activity is 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 triggered damage, it got open via notification, right?
Yeah.
Um, that do we know if the data was was passed successfully to the app, like the notification data? Can we are we able to determine that from Fisher replay?
I resend the notification to my phone, to my phone, and it worked.
You know, what I'm saying is, in in this specific case, was the data that takes us to the other screen, was that successfully? Passed. Um, or did it get lost with the app restart?
I think that's what's happening. It's getting lost while the app responds.
Because, yeah, I I I'm thinking that when when the app first opens with the notification that data is passed. But then if it restarts, then that it's obviously gonna clear that data. So that therefore we we would just land on the lobby screen. And then I guess the final question is, well, while we're all trying to figure out is why did the app restart? Was it because it got opened from a notification? Did that trigger something to cause it to restart? Or would it have had done that anyway, even if he had just clicked on the app icon?
Yeah, that that. Well, we don't know.
And I guess something Todd, maybe you can try to help us with this is. Every now and then try opening the app. Like if you have it in the background, it's been a while. We had your phone off, yada yada. Like, wh- wh- how you would normally, like, let's say you got a notification and so I want you instead of clicking on the notification to go and open the app. Like from by clicking the icon and see if it still restarts, if it does it as often or not.
Yeah, I will. It 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 seems to happen, like when it's happening, it's happening frequently. And then when it's not happening, it's like not happening at all.
I think if you keep the app fairly re like active, so what that means is if you're interacting with the app constantly. It's not gonna happen. It's gonna happen more where if you like had interacted, then it's been an hour or two where you haven't touched it or not even hour or two, maybe you're just using other apps. And so on. It's been a while since we've used the circles app. I think that's gonna this tends to happen.
You think it's happening when when I've been more active or less active?
Less active.
Okay, so uh, I'll make an I'll make an observation again, and I'm not sure if I if it's if it lines up.
Well, when I say less active, I mean. Like, for example, if you if you're interacting with that every few minutes, that's gonna keep it fairly fresh in memory. Or if you have leave it in the background for like thirty minutes, forty minutes, and you're using other apps. That's where it's not gonna have it in memory. So when I say active, I mean like in and out of the app, not actively using the app.
I see. Yeah, cuz what so when the when it first happened, I was paying attention to it last night. I probably wasn't actively in the app or using circles for a good forty five minutes to an hour. Um, I was driving home from work and then from work to my kid's game. And so I wasn't very active at all in circles. And then when I got to the game and I got the notification, then I noticed this problem.
Todd, that you have you had the app kind of uh idle for a long time.
Yeah, I think. Right, and same that same with this morning. So like, so obviously last night I went to bed.
I used to have this problem a lot more. A lot, lot more on my iPhone. I remember I was complaining about this late last year.
Yeah.
A lot where, yeah, I'd open the app after being in the background all night. And um. It wasn't just restarting. It was like things were unresponsive in the app.
Okay, okay.
I don't really have that problem right now, but I know what you're talking about.
Right, so this morning, I've, when I first started using it and started testing notifications, it was happening a lot before we got on stand up. And I was talking to you guys about it. And but since I've been using it this whole time, it stopped. It works just fine. Have no problem.
That's because it's fairly, it's like it's you're interacting with it. So it's.
Right, right, right.
It's not gonna get pushed all the way back in memory. It's gonna resurface every time you interact with it. Um, now, he 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 here's where I'm kind of, my head is with all this. Um, I think that what's happening is normal. If it's been a while since you've interacted with the app and you open it and it relaunches. That's fine. I don't necessarily think that's a bug. I think that's just how Android handles things. And they have to do it. Where after X amount of minutes, forty, fifty an hour, they're gonna have to give priority to something else that's actively using the memory, which makes sense. Um, I think where we are with all this, like our main problem is that we're losing the deep link. I feel like I feel like the actual restart is not the worst thing in the world. Um, but what is bad is we're we're losing that deep link when we're coming from a notification. So I think we, I don't know if it's a good idea to like focus too much on why it's restarting, if it's not doing it. Within, you know, if you're fairly using it, only if you're if it's been in the background for a while, I think that's gonna happen regardless of any app. Um, maybe some apps have better, maybe some apps can can do a better job on this than others. Um, I I don't know if we can improve in that field or not. But I think what we should also be looking at is how not to lose maybe the deep link when we when that happens. Um, and that may be the tricky part where, I don't know, maybe we start it on a device locally if whatever gets fed in. I don't know if that's even possible. Um, but maybe a better way to handle the deep link, I guess. So when the app does restart, you still go to where you clicked. Um, if that makes sense.
It's it's almost like what what we just implemented with the uh. The um. The web view like, well, the the store, the campaign, like what we call it, the custom store listing. Like, we're kind of doing something like that, where we're storing the deep link until they finish onboarding. And I we did that with seventy three. I wonder if it that could be conflicting in any way?
We're 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 storing the deep link locally on the device with seventy three?
I believe that's right. I mean, is that is that right? Like for on.
Yeah, what we do is like. If you press on a notification. Like there's an event that we know, like you press on a notification and we get the deep link from there. And if that deep link has anything to do with joining group, I do save it. And as soon as the user finishes onboarding, I do a navigation.
Hmm, well, that's that's different than.
Yeah.
Talking about here. Um. I I guess also, maybe it's not even possible because in order to save it on the phone, the React app has to do actions, right? It has to take that deep link. It has to store it, which the app isn't even responsive at that point. So. So does this happen with other apps like? It's gonna be hard to test, but I guess my question is, is this something that we're only facing or is this something that is? You know, other apps would have the same problem if they if they were used the same way we're using deep links. Because to me, the way I'm looking at this is that it's kind of almost unavoidable. If the app is gonna restart, it's gonna restart. And if deep link is gonna get lost, like, do they have other ways of storing deep link? To reinitiate it or are they same? Are are they in the kind of this on the same boat?
Or.
Great question.
Yeah, I I mean to for for your answers now, like I I don't have the answer for it. Like, is it asshole other apps?
Yeah, I was kind of thinking out loud. I I don't.
Yeah, and I don't think it's possible to save the deep link if the app is not open. Cuz like it's. Something happened there causes the restart, maybe a crash. I don't know, like.
Is is the deep link leading to the crash, leading to the restart? Think about it. If, you know, Todd's just now experiencing this. Um, and we just recently did all these changes to links.
Well, I I kind of uh asked Todd to do something to help us to help answer this very question, John, and that is. When you're getting notifications, I want you to hold back on clicking them and try to open the app normally as if you normally would. And see, and this is after it's been in a background for a while. It's been like maybe thirty minutes.
Okay, I just opened the app right now and I restarted, like, just saw the splash screen. It happened. Yeah, it happens after a while, you know.
So a and and that that happened with any app, I mean.
It's rare with Slack, like, you know, like I don't use a lot of apps all every day, but I use Slack every day.
Do you use it actively?
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Maybe that's why.
Yeah, even just me and you use it pretty actively, but I, you know, I'm using it with everybody on the team.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is if it's if it's used fairly active, you don't give it enough time to get to that your device to. Push it back in memory where it closes it out. So and that and the same would happen. And that's why Todd is not seeing that problem now. Because he's actively using it. So that's what I mean by. There's certain conditions that have to be met, and that is the app has to be in the background for a while, and you have to not actively use it every few minutes. Cuz if every time you use it, it it would, it would push it back to the front of the memory. Or the queue, or I don't know how they handle it. Let's just say it's a queue.
I mean, I don't use it that actively, like. I mean, i- if I picked the phone up overnight and opened Slack, it doesn't restart.
Well, I would say there's, you know, a few things. First of all, Slack is probably takes a lot less memory than we do. Um.
Actually, Slack just restarted.
Yeah, uh, I'm telling you, every app will eventually restart.
Yeah.
Um, and the factors and thus are how active they're using it, how probably how much space it's taking and if you're using any other apps. Um, where it has to prioritize memory to the active apps, obviously. So every app will restart at one point. Like I've seen it with all my apps. They restart. Um, now the question is. Is and that's handled by the, obviously, the I the 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 operating system. Um, now the question is, how do these? Companies handle deeply? Um, when the app restarts, knowing that it it can restart. Are there any of the same problem we are right now, or do they have another way of handling it, I guess?
There's gotta be a way to handle it. We're we're not the only ones trying to deeply people into a conversation.
Yeah, yeah, and 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 that's where.
I can't imagine opening Slack from a notification and it just go into the lobby, you know?
Okay, so I got my circles app to restart. Um, and basically, that involves opening a bunch of games, apps. Uh, just letting it go, like do it five or six times, and then go to the circles app and then it restarts.
Hmm, can you have your Slack app to force restart? And I wanna send you, I wanna send you a. Maybe a message on Slack after and then you having it in that state and see if how it handles it. If like it it has to restart and then after we start, it has to take you to the correct place after it. It like to the correct deep link. The so I want to see if those two conditions are handled by other apps or not.
Cool, let me do that. I'm just gonna open up everything I had, games and all. Like my phone is, my phone is heating up as I'm doing this.
You're not charging it?
No, I I'm literally like I'm opening like a bunch of apps. I'm purposely stressing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Apple's new um chamber cooling thing apparently should solve that, but.
Yeah, I'm probably getting an iPhone seventeen, but I'm not paying thirteen hundred dollars for chamber cooling.
Yeah, it's it's older priced as always.
Yeah, I'm probably getting just the base model. The preorder opens up tomorrow. Okay, um, Ismael, you wanna start sending me some Slack notifications? I should have a lot of stuff open now.
Yeah, let me try to send you a quick test message, test, send. So that restart?
Um, yeah, but it brought me right to it.
So it it restarted, but it brought you to it.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out if it did restart or not. I saw the splash screen. I saw it very briefly.
But you did see it. You're sure you saw it?
Yeah, I definitely saw the splash screen.
Okay, that means it restarted it. Cuz I mean, they probably have a quicker loading time cuz they're a small app than that.
Send me uh, send me another one.
Yeah, on Slack, it's really quick.
Yeah, send me another one since I'm warm now.
Yeah. Test two, send. Test two, send.
I still saw it that time. Do it again, now I have it, like, the first app in my background.
Has three, send.
You can pull it up now, phone. Okay, my phone didn't get that one.
And didn't get the notification?
No, so try it again?
Okay.
Nope, that one didn't do, I wonder if it has something to do, because you're sending me a bunch of notifications.
What, what do you mean?
Like Slack is moving them behind the scenes.
They're not getting notifications, is that what you said?
Right, but my badge is going up, so I'm getting something. But I can, um, I can click on another Slack notification. Okay, now, I was worn, and I did not get the splash screen, I didn't see it.
Yeah, the app is active, we're not gonna, but you, you said you did see it the first two times.
Yeah.
So they handle it somehow, some way?
Yeah, looks, I mean, looks like it.
So I got, but then they do have a native app, but still, I don't know if that's necessarily their limitation. Then I guess that's, I mean, this is just, you know, my opinion, I think instead of focusing on why the app restarts. We should focus on how to handle the deep link after the app restarts. Which I don't have a solution for, I'm just saying, maybe that's where we should.
What do you think, I mean?
I mean, yeah, if it's because of memory, because a lot of things are going on on the phone, the app will restart no matter what we do. It's just like, how will we recover from the restart without like?
Yeah, how do we recover and still take someone to the conversation, they, when they tap that notification?
Um, I don't know if it's possible or not, like, with what we have, like, React navigation.
It's gotta be possible.
Yeah, I know, just like with our setup and everything. The tools we're using, um, currently. Cause like, if you think about it, the app crashed, so. To think that you were about to save, there's no way how to save it, because the app crashed. Like, if we had that saved somewhere, then yeah. As the app restarting, we can go and look up what's saved there, and if there is, whatever then. Um, do the logic we want, but.
What about if the deep link doesn't? Let the app, like, okay, so, you're saying the app crashed, why not we just use the deep link to open it to the splash screen, so there is no crash? So like splash screen, then navigate? But, you can't. I, I don't.
Yeah, the splash screen is, is not like a screen.
Not a screen.
Yeah, it's, it's called splash screen, but like, it's more of. The, the, the OS tells you to, it, it doesn't give me an image and background color, and I'll do it while your app loads. I'll show you while the app loads, it's not like a screen we have, that you can navigate to. Yeah, I'm not sure if you guys got that, uh.
I'm, I'm multitasking, what, what do we, I don't wanna just like, not do anything, and we just spent, what, an hour on this, what, what can we do? And why is it worse now for Todd? Is that possible? Is it, are deep links doing something? A, a deep link is just a link, like, it's a URL, I, I, I'm thinking under the hood, the only thing I would recommend is. Just doing a check and, and seeing if there is any logic available to handle, like, when an app crashes, maybe. Maybe that deep link's still in the session? That would just have to be some, some research done on the front end.
Is it like? Is it like the same notification that causes? Um, this restart for Todd, do, do you remember if it's like?
No, they, they were two different notifications, one of them is, was chat, and the other one was going to a profile place.
We didn't like profile place. Yeah, if it was like joining a group or something like that, I would say yes, because this is the last thing we worked on to add. This was like the profile place, and, um. That we already had that in place, and there was no changes, I believe, related to, to it. But if it was like, again, a crashing the deep link code, the app would not just restart. It will be a white screen, it will just close, uh, just like that. But not a, a restart, so it's not really a crash, you know, or a bug.
Do we have any solutions?
I'm following this other lead, I don't know, maybe it's kind of. I'm hoping it's related to the, like, it's like, there's this issue here in our sentry. That says, no native splash screen registered for given controller. I don't, I don't know what does, this mean? I asked splash screen, splash screen in it, and it's frequent.
Okay, okay, how, is this something more frequent since Build Seventy-three, or has this been same frequency for the last six months?
Oh, yeah, it was like for, it happens, like, here's it for the, you, like, past three months, five K users.
It's iOS and Android, it affects.
Yeah, it affects both, and these results have been to both iOS and Android. So, I was looking into this issue, I'm seeing if there's, it's reported. Like, I've seen it in here exposed as well. There's no, I don't understand, I, I still don't understand, so I don't know what's going on with this issue.
Is it something fixable?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking into, and see if I can fix it. But it's not just us, like, you can see a lot of people here, like, they have been saying, like, they have conversations going on around it. So, it might be fixed somewhere there.
Also, if, anytime I ask the, you know, A, A, AI, um, uh, and explain the exact problems, like, oh yeah, this is a common issue with React Native. Slash deep links, so if you use them together, so, I'll, yeah, like I said, we still have a solution, I'll keep looking, but. It is a common issue.
All right, well. Take a look at that error that you found, I mean, when you have some time, and maybe. Maybe there's some improvements around that, maybe it's not this, necessarily directly to this issue, but if it solves other issues, it's worthwhile, because it says five thousand users. So. Will you look into that one when you have time? I mean, you're on mute.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll look into this issue, um, see if there's a fix for it somewhere. Regarding this one, the, the native, this, this issue we have here.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, um, okay, well. What else do we have going on, so what other updates do you have, I mean?
Um, my updates is like, um, related to, uh, this screen, creating a group, um. So it's related, related to this screen. Here, like, uh, Jerry did some work for the backend, so when you, um, the grid group, it's gonna actually grid. I'm not sure, Jerry, if you, um.
Yeah, from that last message you sent, yeah, try it again.
Okay, so. So, do this group. Select members, and I have questions regarding this selector, I'll, I'll be back to it. Let's just select two. And for example, if you go, if you wanna do something for approval, it's gonna say, no, you cannot, because there's no welcome message, so. Um, it's the welcome message, welcome. To chat, something like that. And Mr. Gray. All right, works. So, yeah, if we do back to lobby, I guess I need to update the cache. I don't see it here, it should be here. I do, I do update the cache, I do have it there.
I didn't see a message in that group, that might just be something that I have to do, I need to create a system message, that's like, the group has been created.
So, yeah, um. Um, yeah, mostly it work, I just need to see what's, why the cache is not updating the lobby, and I don't see in the lobby as well.
That's, uh, that's on me, it's, there's, the system message isn't creating, and the system message is what would show it in the lobby.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a backend change.
Oh, I didn't do the image, so, yeah, and for the image, it's gonna be, if you select. She to choose. Do this two, and let's make this. Right now, if I can submit for approval, it's gonna be marked as this group will be sub, asking for approval of being public.
Yeah, what, what I'll have to do as well, I mean, I'll have to return you a field off the status, like, is it public pending or private?
For the available groups that we have in the lobby?
Well, uh, like, when you're managing a group?
Oh, yeah.
On this screen here, I need to return you something on get group details.
Yeah, that's true. And, John, my question is, like, so, this is like, initially, it's gonna be used as context, but since this has search. Whatever if I'm gonna do like this, and this is what we've been using before, so it's gonna be having groups here. Do we want them? Cause like, if you press on it right now, it's gonna be like, do you wanna join, but I don't think.
Not going, add them, right, we, it will say add three members, remember?
So we're gonna go back to that, because like, I remember we had it, and.
We still have, that's live right now.
Like how? Like, if you wanna trigger, oh, I should be selecting someone as first, like, if I do this, if I do this. No, like, how, how do you do it, um?
Um, let me see, I thought, if I go to plus chat, let's see if I type a name, and I see a group.
While I remember, like, we had that, but we changed it to this.
Hold on, let me see.
Oh, yeah, here is it, add members to a group, this action will add.
Right, cause the check mark you connects to it.
No, like, but it only, it, it only works with, uh, specific groups, not all groups, like. For example, these would not, but.
Why?
I don't know what's the difference between this kind of group and this kind of group, for example, the first test then. So, um, let me. Let's see, what's the logic we doing there?
Well, that's asking, those are public groups, it's saying, it's asking to join the group, because that's a public group. So.
Yeah, it's, it says it's like public group.
Yeah, so this is interesting, um. We shouldn't even show public groups in that search.
In this search?
Yeah, no.
Um, can we, do we have a field for that?
On the plus chat? Not the chat. So. The plus group.
I'll tell you what's the way we're using exactly here.
Oh, oh, if this is search chat, then.
I think it's called search chat, yeah.
Yeah, search chat, well, then you could just, we, we have a property, you can just only show users then.
I don't see it, this is the.
Or private groups you're in, is okay. Oh. Okay, we, we have groups, so. Yeah, so go down, I mean, you just, yeah, get rid of the public groups array.
Like this, just delete it?
No, get rid of, um.
Oh, this one, yeah, public group.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, let me just do that, but I have to check if we're using that somewhere else, um. This is where we use it. So I can then just delete it, actually. And it's gonna here, and if I. Yeah. Alright, yeah, it works, just like, this is what we were having last time.
Yeah, okay, and only in the plus, this, when you're creating a member, like, of creating, um. A public group, not, 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 sorry, public group, sorry, just creating a group chat. But not just what I message. From the plus chat button, that will still show public groups, right?
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, go back to the lobby.
And I'll be.
Plus chat. So, if you search names here, it'll show public and private.
Yeah, it should be showing here, like, yeah, yeah, so the change that I did, it would not, but I have to handle it, because. What I just removed, it's being used somewhere else, so I have to make sure it's only removed from the other place.
Okay, can you do that now?
Yeah, um.